Okay, many are we rolling or not yet? Okay. All right. Welcome everyone. It's good to see everyone here. Some of them could please ping me and let me know that we're live on the internet. I would appreciate it. Okay. First of all, I'm going to determine whether a quorum is present. Gentlemen, how are you doing? Good, good. All right. First, we're going to determine whether a quorum is present and then we'll call the regular meeting to order and it is six thirty-six this evening. Pledge of Allegiance will be performed by the area, the Alamo Area Council of Boy Scouts. Gentlemen, stage is yours. Thank you gentlemen. Thank you again AJ for your assistance here with the Alamo Area Boy Scouts. We'll be seeing you in the future. Appreciate your help sir. Okay, next on the agenda is the invocation and tonight it's going to be Bernie Barnes. Yes ma'am.
Is that good? Dear Lord, thank you on behalf of all of those who are gathered here today. We ask for your blessings, especially for our council members, residents of Castle Hills, and our special police teams and other guests. We ask for your guidance this evening in all the decisions that will be made for the benefit of our beautiful city of Castle Hills. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Barney, Bernie. Okay. The next item on the agenda is acknowledgements of presentations. First one is proclamation of Nelda Guerrero Drewry's one-hundredth birthday, founder of the San Antonio Folk Dance Festival that celebrated its sixtieth anniversary in March of two thousand eighteen. Also, I'd like to also give these medals from a couple of our businesses here in town. On your hundredth birthday, this is a medal from Taylor Insurance. Yes ma'am. And this is also a medal from the Castle Hills Committee, which is the CHC of it, which is our organization here in the city. Thank you very much. And here is the proclamation. We will go down in this record signing, tenth day of April, two thousand. Okay. Next on the agenda is certificate of recognition of La Rina de Castillo and invite Angela Marie Zavala to the front and her court.
Hello, good evening everybody. We wanted to introduce to you Angela Zavala. And this is her court. This is going to be the very first year that Fiesta Castle Hills has a court. So we want to welcome them to the Fiesta Castle Hills. And then also Joanne Martinez. She's the one that put the queen and her court together. Do you want to introduce her court?
All right. So, as she had said, my name is Angela Zavala and I'm queen of Castle Hills and I want to thank you for the opportunity for selecting me to reign. I'm a senior at Providence Catholic School and I plan to attend Saint Mary's University. Yes, and my court is Elizabeth Anne McLean and she is a second grade student at Castle Hills Elementary School. She's also a Girl Scout and in ballet. And our next, my next princess is Catherine Pender McLean and she's a fourth grade student at Castle Hills Elementary School and she's in the gifted and talented program since kindergarten. And my last princess is Olivia Jane Scott and she's in fifth grade at Castle Hills Elementary School and she is studying musical theater, dance, and voice at the Woodlawn Academy for Performing Arts.
Ms. Zavala, I would like to present you this certificate of recognition to you and then Anna, oh there she goes, Anna will present to the others, but we want to thank you for residing over this court and on this tenth day of April two thousand eighteen, I Timothy A Howell, Mayor of City of Castle Hills, welcome you and your court and also the various fundraising events that are involved throughout the year. The City of Castle Hills is elated to have you in the ninth Fiesta City of Castle Hills Parade. Here you go and here's one of the medals for that.
Oh wow.
And Ms. Anna here will give it to your court. Ladies, thank you all very much and thank you for the job that you've done. Of course, of course, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Joanna Martinez and I am with Castle Hills Community and I would like to thank Kenny, John Kenny, for all the work, lots of hard work, but more than anything, he's a lot of fun. And also, I would like to thank Anna, my comadre, lovely lady, wonderful to work with. My goddaughter is here in the audience too, but without Anna, I don't know what I would do. She's everything. She's incredible. And so with that, I also go on to introduce, would you come up here please, Nellie Zavala. Nellie is the host for our coronation, also the queen's mother, and I would like to thank Nellie. She is so generous to be hosting this event for her daughter, inviting each and every one of you to please join us, the eighteenth, at Providence High School the mansion. We will have music, food, silent auction, and we will be crowning the queen and this is all a gift from Mr. and Mrs. Zavala. They love our community. She is a wonderful giving lady. I'd like to give her a round of applause, please. And of course, last but not least, our queen. She's gorgeous, she's beautiful, and she works very hard. She works with our bishop and in his private office. She also is in choir, she is in the dance team, she's like the head of her school and she's a wonderful young lady. And of course, our royal court, none other than my neighbors, right across the street, we're going to say boo, and of course, Ms. Scott and Ms. McLean, just wonderful little girls, okay? And so I hope to see you all. I have invitations here if you have not received your invitations. And also, I want to thank my husband Vince, who listens to me on the phone till twelve at night and just helps me. Thank you Vince, I love you. Thank you all so much, hope to see you there.
Anna, again, I want to thank you and John and the people, Vince, you two, the court up here. All this does is we added another thing to the Castle Hills. Every year, we've just about doubled this event. I hope that we'll be able to contain it next year after this year. It has been unbelievable and recognition to our city and that's a big part of what we do here. Thank you.
So, Mr. Ryan, that's you. Thank you again and I would like to thank my parents, Joanne and her husband and everyone. Thank you. And my court.
Thank you again and we will put this invitation on one of our media outlets in order to make sure the public also gets invited to this. Next on the list is another one of my favorites. This is a certificate, again, of recognition for Paws for Service and I'm going to invite Bernie and Jay Barnes up to the front with Gus, I believe, this evening. Bernie? Bernie, I want to thank you again. You don't know how much recognition you've brought to our city. You know, I've been to several of your, not several, but a couple of your meetings and been honored to bring Gus forward and then now, it spreads. We have several other residents here which we'll be honoring also. Bernie, you want to tell us a little bit about just what y'all do and how you touch, especially the kids over at Jackson Keller and our future leaders of tomorrow?
Absolutely. Well, whether you may or may not know, Paws for Service is a total voluntary organization. It began early in the nineties, Lynette, I'm looking at our president, by a woman who just felt the need for there to bring some joy to people that were in need. Over the years, we have grown. We currently have over a hundred fifty teens. Our teens visit assisted living places, hospitals, we also go on special visits, we go to the Veterans Administration. In addition to our therapy teams, we are also affiliated with an organization called REED, which is Reading Education Assistance Dogs. We currently have fourteen teens and they go to either schools or libraries and they assist kids who struggle with reading. Kids are very intimidated sometimes to read in front of their peers, but with dogs, they're not. They bring such great joy to so many and I'm so very, very proud to be a part of this organization. Every single one of these people plays a really special role in what they do with their animals and bringing doggy joy to all the people truly in need.
Thank you, Bernie. And not only being heavily involved in this organization, Bernie is also the president of the Women's Club and what I would like to do is we're going to honor, I'm going to read this off and they all basically say the same, but I'm going to bring you all up here for a picture and read off each of the dogs' names. Bernie had, Gus is the one that, I'm not going to say closest to my heart, but I've known the longest because they're all close to my heart although I'm a cat man. But Gus and Haley are, were when I really became accustomed, I mean, found out about this and we started moving it forward as far as the city was concerned. They go to the, Gus here is a REED dog and works with struggling students and right here locally at Jackson Keller. We also have, as you know, other facilities here or near Castle Hills that these dogs play a big part in. So with that said, Gus.
Can you sit?
Yeah, good. Oh, he sits. I wish I could get it. Yeah, there you go. Boy, I wish I could get some people to do that. But anyway, all right, here we go. With that, with that said, this is your basic for the whole club, okay? Authorization. This is for Gus and I'm going to read off each one of the other ones and we will, okay? Deb Louie, which couldn't be here tonight, I'm going to go ahead and give that to you. Ann and Bill Tiller. Bo stepped on my foot and I should have been all taken down. Okay? You're supposed to just get it down with everything for the city or everything. Next on the list is not present, but she is present actually. Her name is Susan Kilgore. Susan's been appointed to boards in the past and is very active in our community and with her today is Soy Sauce. Thank you, thank you very much. We appreciate everything you do. All right.
Tim, do you just mind real quick if I tell you where these folks?
Sure.
So Deb is not here this evening, but Deb and her dog Cielo were certified in the fall of two thousand seventeen and they currently visit Park Lane West and attend special events. Susan Kilgore and her dog Soy Sauce were just certified in March of two thousand eighteen. She plans to visit Brookhaven right here in Castle Hills beginning April seventeenth. Ann and Bill Tiller and their daughter's dog Bo were certified in the spring of two thousand fifteen. Their daughter Rebecca is a resident of Castle Hills and she and her dad Bill are CPAs and have an office here in Castle Hills. Rebecca brings Bo to the office every day and he really comforts those that need, especially during tax time. But Ann also takes Bo to Methodist Hospital on a weekly basis to visit with adults and attend special events. And as the mayor said, Gus and I go to Jackson Keller Elementary as well as Methodist Hospital. I just wanted to recognize them and I thank those others that came here today to support us and also want to recognize our president of the organization, Lynette Pierce. You want to just stand Lynette? She got that.
Thank you so much Bernie. We appreciate it. Jay, good to see you as always. Sure, let's do a photo here real quick.
Ann, why don't you get on the other side of Tim and not get on this side. On the other side of Tim. This is very difficult to do. You should see us trying to do our Christmas card picture with our little bird. Are we good? Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Next is a certificate of appreciation to the IBC for hosting the annual Fiesta Castle Hills Kickoff Party at twenty-two oh-one Northwest Military, April the nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, from five to seven thirty. And of course, the public is welcome. I'm sure you'll be hearing all about it through our media outlets and we're going to bring someone from IBC here. Okay. Anna's going to receive the, Anna's going to receive the document for them and make sure they get it over. They have been unbelievable the past few years. They have nine years they have done the party. And again, last year was a record and we're hoping that we'll break the record again this year. Thank you so much for that proclamation. All right. Okay. We'll let some people exit there and get settled here and then we're going to move on down the road. John, you and Anna, thank you again for everything you do. I saw you out in the comments today. Anna, would you and John come up here please? Well, this is proclamation. So we have a mayoral proclamation whereas Fiesta Castle Hills was founded in two thousand ten by Castle Hills residents Richard and Mariana Lizar, who envisioned united Castle Hills, united Castle Hills residents and community, business, churches, schools, civic organizations, and city officials, along with a family-friendly, community Fiesta-type event in the City of Castle Hills. Whereas the ninth annual Fiesta Castle Hills will be held Saturday, April the twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, and will feature a five-day run, fun walk, a community parade, Fiesta event, and commons include music, food, drinks, booths for children, various vendors, and information booths from commercial and civic organizations. And the community parade will include floats from many diverse communities, civic business organizations, and local residents to have the honor of leading the parade as our grand marshal. Fiesta Castle Hills has steadily grown each year in participation and attendance and has become much appreciated an annual event in the City of Castle Hills. Now for I Timothy A. Howell, Mayor of the City of Castle Hills, do proclaim Saturday, April twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, at Fiesta Castle Hills Day. Signing date is tenth, April two thousand. And we'd like to give you this Castle Hills Fire Department medal, please. But mainly we want to make sure that you got the mayoral proclamation and I've got to tell you again, it surprises me every year that this went from however many to however many again. This is doubled every year and we're proud of it. We want to thank you and if there's anything we can do in the city, we'll. We want to thank you and, uh, if there's anything we can do in the city, yes. Okay, thank you everyone for, uh, being here and for, uh, working with us through our presentations. Next on the list is citizens to be heard and I'm seeing, uh, one citizen to be heard. And that's William Beuler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, I'm William Beuler. My wife and I reside at one oh-eight Prins Drive and we've resided there for about fifty-four years. So we've seen a lot of changes in the city. Uh, I wish to speak to the raising of vegetation across, uh, above streets from the existing twelve feet to fourteen feet. Um, we're fortunate to have a lot of oak trees that extend over the street and many of the citizens, uh, many of the citizens here, uh, are similarly, uh, fortunate. Uh, unfortunately for us, one of our trees is what I call a historic tree, located about six feet from the curb and, uh, one of the limbs does extend over. It's above twelve feet, but it's under fourteen feet. And if, if we're forced to trim it, we're going to, uh, lose a lot of the photosynthesis for that particular tree and it may kill the tree. The tree's roughly three or three and a half, four feet in diameter and probably, uh, it's been a long time since I've had high school math, but, uh, probably ten feet or eleven feet in circumference. So it's a, it's a gigantic tree. I don't have a solution for the problem, uh, but I do, I've talked to Rick briefly tonight and of course he can't respond and you all can't respond on it, but, uh, I'm not the only one with this particular problem. Uh, but I do want to address a second problem and that is, uh, we're receiving astronomical estimates for raising the height of, by only two feet. And, uh, I don't have a solution for that. You all may or may not have a solution for that. But, uh, I'm speaking for myself and the other citizens that have a similar plight. And thank you, uh, for hearing us under Citizens to be Heard.
Thank you, Mr. Beuler. Um, as you know, I can't respond to Mr. Beuler, but I can respond to the chief of, uh, fire chief. Uh, Chief, I think that maybe we ought to get together with your leadership team, uh, with, uh, Mr. Rapley. And, uh, I think we talked about this from the very beginning, about how we were going to address situations like this, whether it means, uh, change some routes that the fire truck goes from one side to another. I don't know. I don't have the answers either. Uh, uh, I know my dad sat out in front of him, Mr. Beuler, you'll appreciate this. My dad sat out in front of our tree in the front yard with a shotgun and a lawn chair. But I don't think that that, uh, works these days like it used to work a long time ago. So with that said, truth, so with that said, uh, why don't you get in front of the, uh, management team with Mr. Rapley and y'all, y'all hash this out and figure out how we're gonna do it, okay? Thank you so much. Johnny, you may, you're on the leadership team. Thank you so much. Okay. I'm gonna move item announcements by mayor and city council up for two reasons. First, we have, I see a guest here that, that may want to say something or not. If not, I will say it for, uh, uh, and also it gets it out of the way. JR, do you have any announcements or?
Yes, sir, I do. Uh, the city manager Ryan Rapley and I had the opportunity to attend the City of San Antonio's State of the City address today. And we heard from Mayor Ron Nuremberg talking about the city as a whole and how it's progressing and what the plans are for the future. It's very enlightening to hear what the City of San Antonio has planned to address the astronomical growth that we are experiencing is gonna be projected for the next twenty years. It was really great to hear from him and, uh, hopefully in meeting with Ron Nuremberg, Mayor Ron Nuremberg later, we can bring some more of that to Castle Hills and share specific details. Uh, additionally, I'd like to thank the fire department for responding to the, uh, fire that we had at Sir Arthur. I received a random text message for me to go check it out, so I was in the area. And, uh, I was really glad to see that our mutual aid agreement was working well. We had fire departments from Alamo Heights, Balcony's Heights, uh, Almost Park, Chavino Park and, uh, Bear County and Leon Valley. So all those people were there helping us and while it was not a big fire, I learned a little bit as well. Uh, given the circumstances, the shifts would change out so that there was not any kind of fatigue and the firefighters are not putting themselves at risk. So again, hats off to the fire department and the police officers for securing the area. Lastly, I wanted to just recognize a student at St. George Elementary that we had the opportunity to go and, uh, present an award to. It was Ms. Delaney Dwyer. She attends St. George Elementary, or middle school I should say. And, um, she received an award for one of the best stories at the San Antonio Book Festival this weekend. And I was able to go and present the award along with, uh, Councilwoman Mc, Ms. McGlynn and Councilwoman, uh, Scott. So I think it's an amazing, uh, privilege to have a young lady like that in our city. And I look forward to seeing everybody at Castle Hills Fiesta on April twenty-first.
Thank you, Ms. Trevino. Ms. Scott, did you have any, uh, uh, comments or announcements, please?
Um, I just wanted to encourage everyone to come out and celebrate with the city. Um, come on out to our Fiesta events. There's lots of them. Um, you can check out the website. And, uh, just come on out and join us for all the kickoff parties, for the coronation, for the five-k run and for the parade and for the full day out at the Commons. I can't wait to see everyone there and get to say hello to more people than I get to see on a regular basis.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Ms. McGlynn, did you have any comments for the audience, please?
Um, I do. I'm sure everybody started receiving their appraisal values from the Bear County Appraisal District. Um, we did. I've already filed my protest. Um, don't forget this year, the legislature's moved the date up from May thirtieth to May fifteenth. So the easiest way for you to control the property taxes you pay is by protesting your value and the increase each year.
Thank you, Ms. McGlynn. Mr. Paul, did you have any, uh, comments to be made to this evening? Thank you. Mr. Gregory, did you have any comments, please?
Two things, Mr. Mayor. We've recently, uh, lost two mayors of the city. Marcy Harper died Saturday and Bill Martin died several weeks ago, two, three weeks ago. And I would request that we at least lower the flag to half mast for a weekend in honor of our two former mayors. Uh, second, I request to the council that we move the next meeting, which is coming up in two weeks. It's right in the middle of Fiesta and there are going to be very few people paying any attention to what's going on. So I would suggest that we simply move those items to the regular May meeting, two weeks after that, if no one has any serious objection.
Alright, we'll get with, uh, the city manager, Mr. Rapley, and he can get with council and we will, uh, move that along. Mr. Brennan, I don't know if I have the authority to lower the flag to half mast, but if I do, uh, so be it. Okay, good. Uh, Rick, for, uh, the next two days honoring two of the past previous mayors, we will lower the flag, the City of Castle Hills, uh, to half mast, please. Okay? Under my comments, uh, I was going to do the same, but I'm gonna go a step further. Marcy, uh, and I, as you know or may not know, were pretty close over the years. She got me started in this business, uh, in the political business and the, uh, getting involved with the city and wanted me to, uh, help with what I could do with, uh, whatever I could do. And, uh, so she's a very special person in my heart. And with that, over the next couple of months, uh, I'm going to, uh, present to the city ideas for honoring her year after year, whether it be, uh, a, uh, dog walk. Marcy loved animals. She, there isn't any, I don't know how many times at midnight I get a phone call to, Douglas, you too, to come out at Ferrian and Cats and Dogs, excuse the pun, and some dog got hit somewhere and we're, go out and get it and wake up, uh, Pets First, get them there, uh, time after time after time. And, uh, with that, besides her leadership, uh, whether, whether you liked her or not or whether you liked her as a leader or not, Marcy Harper made an impression on this city. And I tend to make an impression of Marcy Harper in this city, one way or another, for years to come. So with that said, uh, that was it. I noticed that, uh, thank you very much for being here this evening and I, uh, at my age, I forget, but this is one of Marcy Harper's close friends on the front row. And, uh, Liz, I'm sorry Liz, you know, when you get sixty-five, you know? And, uh, thank you for being here. You were a very, very close friend of, of Ms. Harper, as many people in this building, uh, this evening were. So, uh, with that said, we've moved past that and what we're gonna do next is go on to, uh, the consent agenda. Uh, it's items A through G and does anyone want to pull any one of these items? Yes, sir?
Uh, modify B and pull F.
Okay, so that's B.
And F.
And F. Oh, excuse me, just a second. I'm sorry. We had a, uh, a gentleman arrive late under Citizens to be Heard. Bernard, would you like to step forward, please? My apologies, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me today. Um, I wanted to talk about a school zone and school zone signs. Um, in front of my house, East Castle Lane, uh, I think it should be a school zone. Uh, it's not right now, but it should be. Uh, people just blow right past the stop signs and just floor it up the street to St. George. So I would like to make that a school zone if possible, uh, maybe from starting by the Shell and by Westeria and Southmanton and maybe East Castle Lane and Zornia. Just so at the intersection, it's a school zone on East Castle Lane and Southmanton. So if they run a stop sign or speed, it's already a school zone. And I think fines go up if it's a school zone, so it's a good thing for cops, police officers to, uh, uh, get their numbers up and I think it'd be a great thing. And not just that, but the safety for my kids and the other kids that are usually with, uh, uh, track and field, they use our street and Southmanton for their track. So I think it would be really nice for it to be a school zone. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Udomar. Johnny, would you get with, uh, Mr. Udomar and also Dover, uh, along with, uh, Mr. Rapley? Get with him at, at his, at y'all's all convenience, see what we can do to help that situation out. Okay, let's move on. So we pulled item B and F. Douglas, B?
Just want to add the language on B, subject to approval of the annual budget.
Okay.
That's all I wanted for that one. And on F, there's history to this one. The reason the council, uh, repealed what the review process that had been going on, it reached a point, Mr. Brennan was forced to review it, the mayor, uh, the mayor at that time oversaw various things. And, uh, I put in an article that basically was the, I think, the first ten amendments to the Constitution and I was told that couldn't be put in there because it was political advocacy. And we reached a silly season to where nothing basically can go in there except talk about how good the birds are and the trees are green and the ground is dry. And, uh, we've gone four years without any problems. Uh, the point made at the time we repealed it was that we were all adults. Mr. Brennan, I think is still looking at them and he has suggestions. He's called me every now and then and suggested I change a word or a phrase or admit something. But it's a suggestion that he does to council members. And I think that has worked very well the last four years and we'd really, I see no need to change it.
Okay. Let's get a motion on the, uh, what we'll do is we'll divide this up into, uh, two. Let's get a motion on the table to move this forward so we can go into discussion. Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Thank you. Alright, we have a motion. We have a second to move forward. What we'll do is let's deal with, uh, we'll deal with the consent at the end. Under B, we're gonna add, uh, Douglas would like to add a amendment to. Mr. Douglas?
It's subject to approval, uh, subject to the presentation of the annual budget.
Do you have a second on that? Okay, we have a second on that. All in, uh, any discussion? Thank you. Uh, all in favor? It passes? Thank you very much. Okay, now let's go down to F. Even though that passed, we will, uh, do it in the consent agenda at the end. We don't want to get confused here. Okay, on the, on F. So Douglas explained his, uh, the situation on that and why he pulled the item. This will now go into discussion. Uh, let's start, uh, Douglas, you went ahead and went forward. Go ahead.
I believe the city attorney should review the, the columns. I think it's a good idea. Mr. Brennan has always offered positive suggestions to any column that I've had. But I think it, it should remain to suggestions because once it moved to where you have total power to, uh, censor things terrifically, it can get out of hand as it got out of hand. And you can, you can count on Mr. Brennan, but he's not gonna be here forever and this thing will be on the books forever. Since it was repealed in fourteen, you've not had any problems. No one's gone and slammed anybody in particular and basically I don't, I, I looked through the articles that we've had since I've been here. It's almost impossible to find an article that wasn't advocating something that could be called political. Advocating some group you like. I mean, no matter what it is, you can be twisted and distorted to be a political advocacy. So I think the, back in September of fourteen, we all came to the conclusion we were all adults on the council and that our columns will be written in accordance. And it passed and I see, uh, no need to refrain from doing the current situation of having the city attorney simply review and call up a council member if they have suggestions to say you might think of this or you might think of that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Paul?
I think I have a couple of comments and I appreciate Mr. Gregory's position until the last reporter. Now, Mr. Brennan, if I step out of bounds, please feel free to stop me. I'm sure you will. I want to read paragraph two of an article in the last reporter. And this is the type of thing that we need to prevent from happening. Mr. Gregory states, "It seems to me that some on council are confused as to what, uh, what necessarily needs to be accomplished by the city in the future. From wanting an impound lot in a residential neighborhood to the opening of a passport office in Castle Hills, these odd priorities along with others seem to spell drift within the city limits, city council." I read that article and as soon as I saw that, I went to Mr. Brennan and I said, "Mr. Brennan, is this political, politically, uh, motivated?" He says, "No, only ninety-nine percent." So he, he, here's the thing that bothers me about this article. I believe it was motivated, personally I believe this, to impugn council. Uh, I, I'm gonna go back and read real quick. This is from August twenty-two last year. Okay. "Consider entry authorizing to submit an application to be considered for the U.S. Department of State Passport Acceptance Program." Department of State Passport Acceptance Program." This was brought forward by the ladies, they have reason to believe it would be a gen, uh, very good income generator, plus a convenience to our citizens. The cost of putting this in place is minimum, uh, at the time, it was discussed, where's the trigger point if it doesn't work? There is a trigger point if it doesn't work. Council can say, "Hey, this is costing us money, it's not doing any good, outta here." It's very simple. The next item is Mayor Howe, let's see, um, the motion here is for consider approval of the concept, concept, I'll say it again, concept, for a vehicle storage impound lot and associated staff and facilities. Not one place, not one word in there says anything about residential lot, not one. Now, we own two residential lots, granted, obviously, they may, may not be looked at. But this was authorizing the police department, if they wished to move forward with it, to come up with a plan, period, to come up with a plan, nothing was approved. Now, you know, the interesting thing about these two things that have been criticized in this reporter article, they both passed unanimously, including Mr. Gregory. They both passed unanimously. So I don't know, I, I believe that we need to move forward and, and I was one, it was in, I think it was September, October of fourteen, I approved getting rid of the ordinance. I did not take into account something that I did not know, and once I learned it, I haven't liked it at all. And that is that the person who writes a political argument, or, or, or any kind of bias in that direction in the reporter, nothing happens unless somebody wants to call attention to the ethics in Boston. Now, I guarantee you that if I had written an article like that, there'd still be pitter patting going up to Austin. But the point is, I'm not interested in that. The main thing on this whole issue was, more important to me, if I messed up, or anybody up here messes up, that's on us. It caused chaos for the office, this happened. Administration, we had a person on, uh, council and we had, um, a person who was the editor of the paper, they had to get a lawyer and go to Austin and defend a position because something was interpreted as being political. So do I think it's best in the, in the city's interest to pass all this stuff by Mr. Brennan? Absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to make one comment, that was in August, Ms. Paul? Correct? August. The reason that was in August is because we, I tried to pull it out of the annual budget which passed in July, and I was told it couldn't be done because it, you'd already sent it up to the, um, the people in the federal government. It was a done deal, of course I approved it if it was a done deal, and I approved it in the budget. So, uh, that's one thing. The, I'll let the impound lot speak for itself, but this had nothing to do to disparage, uh, this had to do with informing people about how I might have thought an issue was. Now, if, we've reached the point that you cannot inform people, and that, what I said was correct, it was not incorrect.
Didn't say residential lots, it said to plan, to bring forth, to see if there's something that would make sense for the city. And yes, you had an opportunity to vote no against it, it had nothing to do about the budget because August twenty-second, it was not passed up to the state, so.
I had talked about it then.
Gentlemen?
Was an impound lot.
Gentlemen?
I make my case.
Hold on.
I'm for, uh, item F, thank you.
We'll come back.
I haven't voted yet.
We'll come back around again, okay? Ms. McLean?
So I read through everything that was provided in our packets, and the one thing that I think is a distinct improvement upon the ordinance that was passed in two thousand twelve, that I believe you would have deliberated in two thousand fourteen, getting rid of, is the fact that this year being proposed is a very simple, simple, simple statement that the articles are to be reviewed by the city attorney to limit political advocacy and character evaluation, and that's it. The ordinance that, that had been considered and passed by council before was, was much more detailed in saying that it was to eliminate political advocacy of the passage or defeat of measures pending or likely to be considered by council. And I think that is overbroad, because there are a lot of things that I would like to put in there that we may be thinking about as council, that, that the citizens need to know about. And so by having that language, I think we're getting rid of some of the transparency we need with being able to communicate with the residents. The way Mr. Brennan has, has drafted the ordinance for consideration this evening, I think is very narrowly tailored to prohibit only the most egregious articles from being, um, printed, which would be the ones that will cause us trouble. So I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Ms. Scott, did you have any, uh, comments for the item on the table, please? I'll be back, Denver, soon.
I do, I also like the way it was worded, I didn't feel in any way it would censure or prevent me from being able to get information to the public. Um, once again, I liked this, I thought it was a wonderful idea to have it reviewed by the city attorney because it gives us an extra layer of protection on what we've written, someone else to review it, to make sure that we are, um, staying within the right bounds. And I do like the way it's worded, that it simply states that, you know, to refrain anyone from being, you know, politically active and, um, evaluating the character of any of our colleagues or city staffs, it was very well worded by Mr. Brennan. And I think it's, I do think it is needed, that, um, that there should be some review of what goes out by our city attorney before it actually is published. Once again, I think it, it keeps us safe, it covers us, and it keeps, um, keeps everyone in check. I think it's a, a good idea.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. Vino, did you have any comments, please?
Uh, yes, sir, Mayor. Me personally, I prefer, prefer to err on the side of caution, and on many occasions, I've called Mr. Brennan and kind of used him as my legal compass to make sure that whatever I'm thinking is okay, 'cause it always sounds good in my head. Um, and on many occasions, Mr. Brennan's given me guidance or confirmed whatever I was thinking was good. I do think it's a little bit of a slippery slope, just because it can be interpretate, interpreted very differently by depending on who's reading it. I do have a question for Mr. Brennan, uh, seeing as you probably come across this a lot, is this a standard practice in other cities?
Uh, one of the other cities that I represent has exactly the same process. Um, another one, another city doesn't issue a newsletter, so they don't have a process. And, uh, the largest city that I, uh, represent, uh, doesn't have a formal process either, although they do submit articles to me if they ever appear to be political or, or involving character, uh, issues.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Vino. Uh, Douglas, did you want to say one more thing before we allow the citizen?
I'd like, I'd like to have it, I'd like to have Mr. Brennan as our city attorney to put on the record something. It seems to me that one thing has changed, you've changed from eliminate to limit. There is a, but that's a distinction without a difference, but it's there. Mr. Brennan, how do you interpret this? How do you limit something, upon what basis are you judging something should be limited?
Well, the whole purpose is to eliminate our limit, if you wanna call it political advocacy. Uh, that's not supposed to be done at public expense or through public, uh, involvement or governmental involvement. Um, and, uh, uh, character, character, I hate to use the word assassination, but character assassinations are also not supposed to be done, uh, through governmental sponsorship like a newsletter.
Well, I understand the, uh, we can't advocate something such as when something is put on the ballot, when we were talking about VIA and a few other things, or, or, no, when we were having to, um, to, um, bond issues, everyone knew you were not supposed to talk about it in the newsletter because the city had made the bond issue public that it was gonna be voted on, and no one advocated it because that would've been using city funds for advocacy of a position, namely a bond issue. No one ever did then, we haven't ever since. But I, I, I just don't think limit and eliminate are mutually exclusive. I think they're, they mean two different things. To limit something means something can remain, to eliminate something means nothing remains.
You know, the, the city, uh, Mr. Gregory, the city manager just pointed out to me that possibly the word, uh, omit would be better than the word limit. Uh, not sure what you think about that.
Well, omit is, is synonymous with eliminate. Omit eliminates everything. So you're back to eliminate again.
Well, uh, it's a judgment call, it's subjective as to what's, uh, an elimination or omission or just a limit. Uh, factual statements of political topics, uh, agenda topics, uh, current topics pending before the city council, um, uh, if they're reported, uh, factually without bias or advocacy are, are good for the good, because they inform the public about issues that are pending before the city council. But it's also a fine line to where, uh, an article can be used under the guise of information when, if you really read the article, it's, it's pushing an agenda, it's supporting a particular side of a, of a current political agenda. And, um, I, I just have to use my best judgment, and it's subjective occasionally as to what an article is saying. And when that happens, I always try to work with the author of the article, uh, to see if there's some other words that can be used that would still do the job that the author wants done, uh, and really, we hadn't any, I hadn't had any problems working that out.
Well, I know through the years, you, you graciously looked at my articles almost all the time and had positive suggestions. And ninety-nine out of a hundred times, I've changed the wording or taken, taken out stuff. But I'm just, you're not gonna be here forever, and this council isn't gonna be here forever. And we know in the past, people will use this to completely censor things. And I'm using censor not in the terms, it has been recently used, but to keep people from talking and writing about something. And that's dangerous, flat out dangerous. And we've seen, and as I say, we've seen in the past how it has been bitterly abused to club council members from talking about anything, to the point I couldn't even copy the Constitution because the Constitution was political advocacy. So I caution the council to go back to something that we eliminated four years ago, and, um, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Douglas. Uh, I'm gonna hold my comments until after the public. Uh, we have one, someone signed up for this, and then we'll come back through one last time. Uh, Mr. McCormick? We have three minutes, sir.
Clyde McCormick, two oh seven, Carrollwood, uh, here in Castle Hills. When you become council members or when you become mayor, you don't surrender your constitutional right to free speech. While there may be some limitations on that, a prior restraint on free speech has, is proposed in this case, has been held in the past to be unconstitutional. This particular ordinance seems to me to be a solution in search of a problem. I don't know that we really have a problem with, with these issues, but the, the way the ordinance is written is extremely vague and fuzzy. If we say political speech is all to be eliminated, anything you say, having been an elected official and an official publication, is political, and it's a matter of opinion. So when you say political speech, anybody can interpret that however they, however they may, they may please. It can be simply a statement of, as Mr. Gregory pointed out, listing the Bill of Rights or something from the Constitution, and even though that is public information, it can be interpreted as political speech and could be eliminated. The other issue is that there are limitations, no limitations at all, on Mr. Brennan's or any subsequent city attorney, his powers to deal with that matter of review, whether he has the right to redact it, whether he has the right to edit it, whether he has the right to omit it or exclude it completely. That makes the ordinance way overbroad for the purposes that are sought to be obtained here. In fact, it's, as I say, a pre, a pre, a prior restraint on free speech, which is probably not appropriate if you're gonna be considered all grownups. As far as the lawsuit is concerned, as the city, if it's a publication of the city, and it is, has sovereign immunity and can't be sued for it. Can be sued, but it can be turned around, it's, 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 uh, sovereign, sovereign immunity. As far as the other issues, personal individuals can sue you for practically anything they want, and your protection under the law comes under the state constitution, the sovereign immunity protection. The other issues might be less obvious to you, and that is that you're turning over the power of control of what you say to the public, to someone who is essentially a contractor. He has no standing to complain, he's not an elected judge, but you're giving him the power to control what you say. Now, I realize that somebody can abuse the power of, of free speech, as might have been done at some time in the past, and maybe a character assassination comment or something of that sort, and I think that's inappropriate. But I think that can be dealt, dealt with after the fact, simply by, uh, a voluntary review by Mr. Brennan and a comment to the author that this should be, should be reviewed. In addition, you have an editor at the, at the newsletter itself, who will, who will review it and cancel, and cancel it out if it needs to be done. That's all I have, thank you very much. I ask you to, to refuse to reinstate this subject resolution.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Sure, go ahead and then I'll.
Okay, um, I have a question for you, Mr. Brennan. Were we to pass this and every article that we wrote from here on out was reviewed by you, what power would you have over that article? You found something in it that you didn't like that I wrote. You contacted me, you said, Alden Scott, I think this section right here is inappropriate. And I say, "I don't care, Mr. Brennan, I think, I'd like to have that published." Does this give you the power to say, "No, you cannot publish it," or is this just having you review it to the point where you then tell me, "This is, I think it's a bad idea, Mrs. Scott, I don't think I should, I don't think you should write this, I don't think you should add it." And I say, "Oh, yes, yes, it needs to be in." Do you then have the power to say, "No"? And since you're, what is actually published, or are you just reading it to advise us?
Uh, it's my opinion that I do not have an absolute censorship power. Uh, it's, it's the power, or the, the, the jo, my job or responsibility to, uh, give legal advice that a certain article or statement in it, uh, has the potential to get the city in trouble, uh, for its publication at, under city auspices or with city expense. And, and that was the case that happened before I got here, apparently, where somebody filed an ethics commission complaint against a city official who had authorized payment for, uh, in a statement or an article that came out in a city newsletter, I guess, uh, and the city official that, that wrote the check, uh, had a complaint filed against them, uh, ended up spending several thousand dollars on legal fees representing, uh, that person before the Ethics Commission. And contrary to what Mr. McCormick said, he's completely off the mark on this particular issue. There's no censorship, there's no, uh, limitation on free speech rights, First Amendment rights, any of that kinda stuff. This is just a question of whether, uh, a, a statement or an article is being published or presented by the government of the city of Castle Hills, uh, uh, on a political advocacy or character assassination.
Okay, so you would be providing advice to us?
Yes, ma'am.
And then if we decided that we were just, that's what we wanted in there, we could go ahead and say, "Put it in there"?
Certainly, the city council. I don't, I don't know that the individual would have the power to reject my advice, I think it would be a city issue that the city council would make the final decision about.
Okay, so you're not censoring me, then, you're just advising me under this ordinance?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, if that's the understanding by the city attorney of what this does, I take my objection back, because I think that's a very good thing, that the city attorney can advise council members to rephrase something or eliminate something, that I thought that was how we were still doing it. As I say, um, we have had an instance in this city where the, I think it was the acting city manager or the assistant-
city manager or the assistant city manager advocated some issue that was being voted on and it was fined. She was fined, I think a thousand dollars or something like that. This was many years ago.
It was more than a thousand dollars, but it was not only her, but it was also the city that was brought to, brought to...
Yeah. So if this is not, if this is simply the power for Mr. Brennan to review an article and call somebody up and says, you should rethink it and reword it, I have no problem with that, none whatsoever.
Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir. I just want to remind everybody, we're only talking about one medium here and that's the city-funded medium. If anybody maintains a website or a mailing list they're going to use with their own personal email, they're free to say pretty much whatever they want, assuming their own risk. I do have a quick question for Mr. Brennan. Would having you review it and make notes to us prevent the city any kind of legal, or give the city any kind of immunity if there was an issue?
You know, there's a few statutes out there that says if the city attorney gives an opinion on a subject, that it provides immunity for the, the city or city officials. As far as I know, that does not apply in this situation. I, I give advice, but if I gave wrong advice or bad advice, I think the ethics commission or ultimately the district attorney's office acting for them could seek, you know, judicial penalties and, and take the position the city attorney made a mistake.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Mr. Brennan, I have several questions now that it's all brought up. First of all, how many times do I call you when I put anything in writing and it goes out and the public paid for it? In case the public doesn't know or care or whatever, it's every time, every time. You will never see me ever go against our paid council. Secondly, I was here when all that happened and an individual got everybody fired up, talked somebody into going to Austin and filing a claim against the city in Rita Hoyle, basically paid along with the editor of the newspaper, also court fees and fines due to that situation. And that's public record. Look it up if you want to find out who it was. So I will tell you this. I will exercise on, on the side of caution. I will ask Mr. Brennan every time, and if he asks me to change it, I'll change it, is what I'll do. Because that is, that is a publication paid for by the city. Now, if I don't like it, do what I do. I have three media outlets. Castle Hills News First, in case it wasn't anybody knows that's under three months of age. My own website, Believe in Castle Hills, my own website, Timothy A. Howell Mayor. And I'm not afraid. I'm not afraid to tell people what's going on. And I won't be in the future. And it's going to get worse too, as we move through all this. So with that said, if you want to talk about what you don't want to, you know, what you want people to hear, pay for it. Douglas, you paid for it one time. So I would suggest that we exercise caution when we do this. And it's nothing for Mr. Brennan to look over this. In the old days, we used to say the mayor was in charge of the newspaper. You remember that? Boy, I wish that would still happen. I'd really get a lot of friends then. But it's not. It's not the way it works. But Mr. Brennan, the question I have, is there a question in all of this? The question I have is what's going to happen the next time somebody comes to the city, which they could do in this case, and sue the city for that? What are we going to do then?
Well, I, I don't think it's likely somebody's going to sue the city or sue an official for what they've said, but it's very simple to file a complaint with the ethics commission about a statement or publication, you know, emanating from the city. I think it probably costs nothing to file a complaint up there. And once a complaint is filed against the city or a city official, they have to defend themselves, or they should. Now, one thing that's changed since I've been here is that we've got, have an indemnification ordinance that protects or supports city officials in the event that complaints are filed against them, like that ethics commission complaint. And if the defense is, is legitimate, the city becomes responsible for defending the officials in situations like that. And I, I don't want to say exactly like that, but there's the opportunity now for that indemnification that didn't used to exist on the city books. So I don't know what the outcome is going to be, but at least the person, the city official, will have a fair shake at protecting themselves.
So would it be the, would it be, in your opinion, the cautious in order to have something in place where the city takes an official position on what can or can't be said based on what this council has said?
Certainly. You're always going to be better off if you can say that the action taken, what had been reviewed by the city attorney and in good faith, was, the action was taken after, based upon the city attorney's advice.
So now I'm confused.
Okay.
And I see no objection to that.
I am very confused because now the person who thought about that and brought it all forward is now for it. Is that correct, Douglas?
Now that it's very clear exactly what this does and does not do, I have no objection to this.
Okay. We've got a motion and we've got a second, Mr. Trevino.
One last quick question, Mayor. Sorry. I hate to belabor this. Mr. Brennan, one quick question again. If you were to give a judgment on a letter, would that take away the protection the city provides in terms of insurance?
If I was to do what?
If I, for example, I wrote something that I shouldn't have and I became subject to an ethics complaint, the city would defend me? Is that correct? Or would I have to defend myself?
There's a process to, to achieve or obtain indemnification. And it's not just because I said you're entitled to it. It's a council decision as to whether indemnification is going to be granted. You know, first you request your insurance to cover you, TML, and if they don't, then the city can step in and, and indemnify an official. But there's a process that has to, to go through. Ultimately, the city council has to decide.
So if your opinion before it's published, would that have any bearing on the city indemnifying or not? Are the insurance...
You mean if, if I'd said that the article was okay? Yeah, I, I think that would carry weight, but it wouldn't be the final decision. I'm not a decision maker.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I have one more comment?
Go ahead.
I find this interesting and I agree that, as you probably don't know, everything I put in, I send by our attorney also. I think it's important. Unfortunately, our attorney does, sometimes may not know whether the details are correct or not. It's just the presentation one thing. This article has at least two major flaws in it. To me, that is despicable. All that being said, there is no reason that we shouldn't proceed with this. Again, we don't have to listen to him, but if we run it by him and, and agree with what he has to say, if this, this booklet should be just for informational purpose. Tell people what's going on. Just, there should be no intent of anything like this. And i- if everybody just sticks by the rules, this, this political pettiness in this city gets to me, I tell you.
Well, I guess frankly, we'll find out when, pretty soon. Okay, one way or another. So with that said, we have a motion. We have a second on the table. It looks like discussion...
I pulled my, I pulled my objection to it.
Okay, thank you. Publicly, Douglas pulled his objection. Okay, so with that said, we have a motion. We have a second on the table. All in favor? All opposed? Wins four to one. Thank you. With Mr. Trevino voting no. All right. Okay, next we're going to move on to a, the consent agenda. Thank you. Which we've already dealt with the amendment to the item B and we've dealt with F, okay? So now we're voting on A, C, D, E, and G. We had a... We had a...
Mayor, I think, I think that was covered. All of those were covered in the first vote, weren't they? And then you had separated out F, which was just then...
I thought it was, but I wanted to make sure.
Is that the way you understood it, City Secretary?
Okay, well, then that's good.
I think you're done with the consent agenda.
Thank you. You did. No.
I was under the impression we were voting on the amendment to B, not the whole consent agenda.
I was also under that same impression, impression.
All right, let's do it again. How about that? We on item A, C, D, E, and G, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, council. Let's move on to the public hearing, please. Conduct a public hearing and act upon ordinance number 20180410F retracting the juvenile curfew. Mr. Siemens?
Yes, sir. I think it's reenacting, Mr. Mayor, reenacting the juvenile curfew.
Conduct a public hearing and act on an ordinance number 20180410F reenacting the juvenile curfew. Sorry to dim my glasses.
No problem. Good evening, council, city staff, Mr. Brennan and citizens. Consistent with Texas local government code, annually on the third year, we are required to review the juvenile curfew ordinance. As such, the last time we did that was in May of 2015 and it is here again now in 2018 for the same renewal purpose. There's no substantive changes to the ordinance, although it should be noted that there were a few typos that we'd like to clear up that, that many had found. The first being, this was adopted and reads as such, 2012-05-12-A, adopted in May 12, 2015. That should be 2015-12, excuse me, 2015-5-12-A to reflect the actual date of adoption. It was just a typo on, on the year, from 12 to 15 is what it reads now. It was first referencing the original ordinance of number 734. However, when it was last reenacted in 2015, there was a typo there. It referenced ordinance 735, which is additional satellite dishes on, on your domicile or home. And it also referenced 12 noon as opposed to midnight. This ordinance is effective from midnight till 5:00 a.m. It read 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., all inadvertent, of course. So those have been corrected. I move that you pass this ordinance again as is.
Thank you, Mr. Siemens.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it is now, he's explained the deal. Let's go into a public hearing, please, which it is now 7:59. Since nobody signed up for this, we're going to be a little lenient. Mr. Udomar? Come on. Mr. Udomar, I'm going to let you sign up afterwards, okay?
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
We'll do it by proxy at the moment.
Perfect. I just wanted to talk about this. Austin just got rid of theirs in 2017 after having it for 27 years. And they stated that, the police chief stated that it was because they didn't want to profile the, the teens as criminals. And I think that's a great way of thinking. Like, we don't want to criminalize somebody just for walking or being around. If they're doing something wrong, that's, that's when we get them, you know, it's a, but if, if they're not doing anything wrong, I don't want to criminalize people that may look young, not even if they are, you know, if they're 17 and under, but they, okay, say, say they're 18, but they look 17. So I don't want to say criminalize them already in the mind for the police officer. And I think there's other ways to go about it. So I would like council to do some research and vote no on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, was there anybody else who wanted to say a couple of words that didn't sign up? Okay, all right, let's go. It is now seven, is now eight o'clock. And we're going to close the public hearing. And do I have a motion for this item, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Paul, motion by Mr. Trevino. Okay? Let's start to the right. Mr. Gregory?
Mr. Brennan, let's say somebody is 16 or 17-year-old and it's Friday night and their friends are out at 12:15 and they're arrested for the curfew. What type of record is shown, is there a permanent record of their being arrested violation of this ordinance?
You know, it'd be better, I think, if the chief answered that question because I'm not sure.
There is, on the, on the actual ordinance portion. Now, what I would like to say is that I don't think this is a criminalization ordinance as much as it is a child in need of supervision's ordinance. This, it goes through the exceptions, which are numerous. And it also allows for two warnings, a contact of parents to make sure they're aware that their child's outside the home, as I would want done for my children if I didn't know they were outside the home. That's more what it's to protect is the, is the, is the concerned parent whose child may have snuck out of the house or, and/or, you know, potential criminal activity, but it doesn't get to that level here in our city. And it's more to protect the children that might be in need of adult supervision as opposed to criminalization. I will add that the first two contacts result in, and again, warnings and contact of parents so they can, they can understand that their, their children are, are not at home. Beyond that, I believe a citation, and again, that's optional. And it can be issued to the parent or the child, dependent on age of the child, situation.
Over the years, how often, how many people have we been found in violation of this ordinance?
Very few. I didn't poll exact numbers, but they're minimal, minimal. And I think that's because we have a, a, a majority of good parents in our city, if not a vast majority, of course. And furthermore, I would argue that this, this ordinance isn't to protect our children and youth as much as it is to protect those that come into our city from neighboring areas, such as the apartments and, and other adjacent areas to our city.
How does it protect them?
Well, we can find out if they're authorized to be outside or not, sir. And, and the old adage still holds true that after midnight, not much good happens. And certainly, that's the case for children, you know, under the age of 17. And if they're authorized to be outside, again, there are numerous exceptions that you just, you just confirm that, that they, one, we live in a proximity to Mexico and the border, which is current, you know, very well-known for trafficking of children. There's a, there's a protection method. Are these children, you know, supposed to be outside? Should they be outside? Do the parents know that they're outside? Are they being coerced? Is there something else at play? I think there's a number of reasons to consider it.
Mr. Paul?
Thank you. Chief?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gregory asked kind of the question. Over the last three years, we were, to my knowledge, there really hadn't been any problems. And if we've had problems, hadn't it been from outside the city coming in?
That is correct. And most of our problems are not the juvenile variety. As you all know, with the increase in arrests that we presented in budget workshops last year, most of ours are adult problems, transient adult problems. If I transit, I mean, mobile, mobile folks in vehicles or other.
I assume in this, I know what happens when you assume, but the reality is that I believe this with our officers in our city, that this is all situation-oriented. The guys walking down the street, you're not going to stop being harassing. If you see a bunch of guys hanging together and, and look suspicious, you might ask them questions. Am I leading you? Is this correct?
No, you're absolutely not leading me. That's, that's exactly the, the purpose and, and the intent as well as the design. And I would argue the, the invocation, if you will, the actionable portion of it. Our folks are, we employ the best, hands down.
Excuse me, if we didn't, it wouldn't matter if we had an ordinance or not.
That's right. That's right. And really, you know, an officer could articulate a number of... That's right. That's right. And really, you know, an officer could articulate a number of reasons to contact the juvenile with or without an ordinance, or for, an adult for that matter, after midnight, because it's just suspicious by very nature of being out and on foot after midnight. To the extent that we are currently working a suspicious death in one of the drain ditches, as you're all aware of, that occurred after midnight. You know, things can happen in the dark.
No, things happen, yeah. Mr. Paul, were you through? Ms. McLean, did you have any questions, since you have three young children?
I, when I started reading through it, I'm like, wait, 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 the kids can't be outside. Then I read through the entire ordinance. And I really liked that we have a very detailed number of exceptions where if you're, it's an emergency or you're outside.
Or with permission of the parents.
With permission of the parents.
Which is all I need to see.
Because that's where our children would be in our cul-de-sac, because they love to play in the dark with flashlights and play hide and seek.
As they should.
But what I also like is that there are penalties, but the penalties are really, they're not severe. It's a class C misdemeanor with a fine of $50 to $500. And there is a comment that the municipal court judge should encourage consideration of community service programs. So to me, there's a lot of leeway where you, what you're really trying to do is, is keep children safe. And so I'm, I'm happy with it.
And, and worth noting is that's on a third violation whereby those exceptions have not been met the first two times. It's almost impossible to get there if they're out there doing the things that, that we encourage our children to do.
Ms. Scott, did you have any comments, please?
Yes, immediately I jumped to, what about prom? What about, my kids are young, they have a dance party in the yard. It's a school function.
You're there.
So as soon as I started reading through all of this and I, and I found how detailed it was, it covers just about any legitimate reason that anyone under the age of 17 would be out and about. You're having an emergency situation, you tell your child to go run to the store, to the 24-hour pharmacy for you. All of those are covered in here. Any legitimate reason that anyone under 17 would have to be out of their house is covered. I'm very impressed by the wording. I'm very impressed by everything. And I'm impressed the fact that, that it's just, let's keep our kids safe, bring them back home, double-check and make sure they're where they're supposed to be. And if they aren't, like I, like you said, the, the violations are, the penalties are, are quite minimal and it takes several times to get there. I'm very, I'm very impressed in having two young children and one now teenager who's just getting ready to be a lot more mobile. I appreciate the thought and effort that goes into this because if my son was out and he didn't fall into any of these categories, I certainly want you to drag him home, thank you very much. So yes, this is well put together.
I used to get a spanking. Okay. Mr. Trevino, did you have any questions or anything?
Yes, sir. Chief, I remember this coming up a couple of years ago when Chief Davis brought it forward and he explained it then, that it was almost like a tool.
That's exactly right.
In y'all's toolkit. Is that still the case?
Absolutely. And like I said, I, I honestly don't have numbers because I don't know that we had any in 2017 that I could report. It is, it's another tool to help protect the citizenry and the youth of, of Castle Hills.
I, having attended a symposium on human trafficking and realizing how prevalent it really is considering we have no idea that's happening, I, I can appreciate our officers having the ability to go out and check, especially in a city like Castle Hills where we know the officers have developed a relationship with the residents. And it's not so much, it's more of just checking on and make sure they're okay. Given the area around Castle Hills, I can't imagine that it wouldn't be a good idea to make sure that our perimeters are safe and those that travel them are safe as well.
Agreed. And if my, well, I may or may not have snuck out once or twice as a juvenile myself. I will not confirm or deny those statements, but it happens. And so it, it, you know, again, it's a check sum. It's not so much a criminalization effort that we're, we're pursuing.
Well, I wanted to, I want to say a couple of things. I know you're surprised at that. I, I respect Mr. Udomar's comments.
I do as well.
And I, because I understand and I am just so glad that they didn't keep records in this city before 1970.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You may want to change the verbiage in here because what it says is under 17. So you're talking about everybody up through 16. So the curfew is people up through 16. You have, it's under 17 here, so that means people from 0 to 16 are covered. And yet in section 26501, they talk about, there's a limbo here of if you're 17 years old. Because in that section, they talk about a guardian for a person 18 years of age or older. So I would suggest that we change the under 17 to up to 18 years.
I kind of like that. Hannah?
I don't know if I agree with that because at 17 years old, I was in college and living on my own at 17 years old.
That is the gray area with the state because under 18, under 18, 17 and under is still, you need to be emancipated for the purposes of school. However, to be charged criminally, it's 17 and older. In other words, under 17 cannot be charged criminally. So 17 is a, is a unique age in our state. Not many states, I think there's only five left that are similar in statute, that view 17 in the same lens that we view it. So there are some anomalies there, call it by design, call it by just refusing to change it yet at the legislative level. But 17 and above, the reason it reads under 17 here, 17 and above, they can be treated as an adult for any other purposes, except truancy and things of that nature where it, where it falls under the family code of 18, below 18.
So, Maretta, would you want to leave it at this or would you want to change it?
The 18 you're talking about is the definition of the parent. That doesn't have anything to do with the child. That has to do with the definition of parent.
I think we should leave it at 17 because at 17, I was coming and going to and from work. And, I mean, if you pulled me over, I could have provided, you know, university ID.
It should rightfully read under 17.
And so it needs to be under 17 because once you reach 17, you can enroll in university, you can, you know, you can get an apartment, you can, I mean, there's lots of things you can do at 17 that you can't do at 16. That's that, as he was saying, that's that odd age with parental permission. You're an adult but not quite an adult, is that, how does that follow?
Yeah, and I don't know that I, my last statement was exactly correct, that it should rightfully read that. It's, I mean, it should if you all determine that that's where, where you're, you're satisfied with it at. It is, again, that area where the state has two different views and, two different lenses as it looks at 17 versus 18.
Well, I want to, I want to get back to these comments. I'm not, I'm not sure what I was doing when I was 17, but I assure you, I wasn't going to college.
If you remember, three years ago, when we, when we brought this forward, it was included a daytime, a daytime curfew consistent with that of most schools. That, I would argue, would need to include the under 18 because that would be that truancy area. But that's not being considered at this point. So I think we're okay with where we're at, unless Mr. Brennan can think of another reason why we shouldn't.
Bottom line is, based on, on Mr. Udomar's thoughts, which I agree with, by the way. The, how many times, but this is something, this is kind of a counter to that. How many times is gunfire reported within a mile of, two miles of this city?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, it's pretty regular. They're, they're in that area, that vicinity, yes, sir. More during January and Fiesta and, and July 4th, but obviously, two or three times a week would be a fair assessment.
And another question I have, and I mean, this is serious, okay? I mean, I'm not trying to be funny here. So anyone 16, 17, 12 is walking in front of my house at 2:30 AM, what are you going to do?
What, what will we do?
Who's sleeping over there? What, what would you do?
Well, I, we wouldn't...
Or in front of Mr. Udomar's house, or anybody's house.
We wouldn't have to do anything. We wouldn't have to do anything and likely that would come down to the discretion of the officers to, to have that feeling of whether or not they were, they were perpetrating anything more than just walking down your street. Whether there's a crime committed in the immediate area? Have we had a rash of, of criminal mischief events in the area? You know, circumstantial stuff that would lend credibility to a stop and, and ask question.
Okay, that's just all I want to know because, I mean, I'm not worried about it because I've got cameras that cover every inch of my whole property. So I'm not worried about it, but I do worry about the people who, who don't have, have that. And, you know, if we find people under, in my yard a lot, we found a dead guy in my yard. Okay, that's what happens when you... That's a joke, anyway.
Mr. Brennan, does this eliminate the need for probable cause?
Um, yes, sir. Pretty much does.
If you're not within those exceptions, it establishes probable cause for a citation on the third violation. So it, that, that in essence is your probable cause.
All right.
Mayor, may I make a quick comment?
Of course.
It'd be real quick.
All right.
I was going to just say, having been on as many ride-alongs as I've been on, to answer the mayor's question, I can imagine the officers would pull up and say, hi, how are you doing?
Absolutely.
In which case, if the child or whoever is up to something that's no good, they're either going to run, in which that's pretty much a red flag to the police officers that there's something not kosher there. So I wouldn't...
That's correct.
Put it past the officers to do it the right way.
That, that's correct. That's, that's exactly how it would happen. Hey, guys, you doing okay tonight? And if there was nothing nefarious or other that came out of it, you know, move on to the next call that you're, you're usually too busy, you know, taking to, to entertain those other stops anyway.
That's important because a gentleman, they found that had passed away in my front yard. Maybe if they would have stopped by and said, hey, what's going on? You know, he would have said, I just got shot or whatever, you know, whatever it was. However that turned out, I don't remember, to be honest with you.
Understood.
Okay, with that said, no, the gentleman unfortunately passed away from a drug overdose.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, so with that said, we have a motion and we have a second. Sounds like that, all in favor? It is unanimous, thank you, counsel. We've already exercised our announcements by the mayor and council members. And so I would invite... Under mayor's comments, I would like to let you know that the US Department of State Department actually approved our passport application. And we are officially approved. What we need to do now is we need to get our people trained. So we do have a plan. And if anyone's interested in that plan, please see Mr. Rapley. He'll tell you all about it and, and how we're going to handle that. The passport office will be open Monday through Wednesday from 8:30 in the morning to 1:30 PM for walk-ins and 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM Friday. And I'm going to put you on the spot, Ryan. Could you, could you give about 30, 60 seconds or less on what happened when the city of San Antonio did this?
Can I do it? Please, can I? Can I do it? I just researched it.
Oh, good, good.
700 pages of their budget.
Excuse me, sorry.
Please, please.
We have someone really interested in that.
Buried way down in like page 600 of the budget for San Antonio out of like 800 pages. There was a note under the mission statement for the city clerk on program information that in 2010, the office of the city clerk was designated as an official passport acceptance facility enabling that division to accept applications on behalf of the US Department of State. Said initiative has generated and will continue to provide new revenue to the city of San Antonio. It was something that they had identified as a revenue stream. Well, what's really exciting is when you look at what their revenue stream has been from passport accepting, passport acceptance activities that include both the fee and the photo fees. Their actual amount collected in the year 2016 for their fiscal year was $537,240. Last year, their target was in the 500,000s and they exceeded that by over 100,000 with $659,727 of revenue generated by the passport office. So much so that they have authorized the hiring of a new passport clerk, according to their budget. They're adding a new person in the clerk's office just for passports. Their target this year, they're looking for $679,000 worth of passport acceptance. And I'd like to take just a little bit of it for our city, so.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. The exciting thing about all this is, how many times have you been to the city of San Antonio or a post office and waited in line? Million times, I can tell you. So with that, with that said, hopefully, what we're hoping for here, and which counsel voted for, was to take some of that business away from San Antonio where, hey, I'm going to go to Castle Hills. I'm not going down there and wait an hour in line to get this done. And, and we will benefit from this. So with that said, do I now have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second? I mean, somebody second? Good. All in favor? Thank you very much. Y'all have a good evening. Thanks, everyone, for being here.
San Antonio only has two passport offices.
They only have two offices, one at the municipal records building, right off of...
So that revenue is only from two San Antonio, the two San Antonio offices, the deep passports.
Well, they may not approve them because the state department had to look at our location beside...